Good morning. I'm not sure I'm on. Is it on? So, this is the second deliberation and it's Monday, August 29th. And I'm gonna start by just introducing, we have a planning commissioner Mills is attending the deliberations today. I'm gonna go through a few items, but I do wanna give us a little bit more time considering that staff's letter that you're reading now with the final order draft, give people some time to review it, just because we just received it very close to the time of today's meeting. So, let me first start by, so Commissioner Mills, I just wanna verify that you've read all the relevant documents, seen the webcasts, et cetera, so that you're fully informed coming into the deliberations today.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm, I have read the AIS information, the supplementing memos by Gabe, and some of the other reference materials provided in the CD. I've viewed several portions of the, I've viewed all of the meeting webcasts and viewed several of them several times trying to make sure I got it straight, so yes.
Perfect, thank you.
And ex parte.
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry, yeah, and I have had no, to my knowledge, no ex parte associations of any kind.
Okay, and does anyone in, from staff, any other commissioners or the public want to contest that? Thank you, Commissioner Mills. So, I realize, really, I didn't leave a moment, does anybody have any public comments for today and it can't relate to the current quasi judicial process that we're in? Okay, please come, come on up, please. Please introduce your name and your address.
My name is Ingrid Went. I live at 35, excuse me, 35 Westbrook Way in Eugene. This is one block south of Braeburn, heading out towards Spencer's Butte. I'm speaking to you today not as an appellant, but as the former poet in residence for the Eugene Public School System and a former retired Fulbright professor to the University of Frankfurt in Germany. So, poetry is my life. And I'm going to share with you something that's not widely known, which is that the Oregon State Legislature, in its wisdom, introduced a custom of opening each session with a poem instead of a prayer, which is rather lovely. And my mentor in poetry was the former poet laureate of Oregon, William Stafford, that some of you may know about, quite well-known poet. One of his poems that speaks to me personally very deeply, and I'd like to share it with you, it is a poem that is nonpartisan, it is a poem that speaks to the good in each of us. And it's titled "A Ritual to Read to Each Other." If you don't know the kind of person I am, and I don't know the kind of person you are, a pattern that others made may prevail in the world, and following the wrong God home, we may miss our star. For there is many a small betrayal in the mind, a shrug that lets the fragile sequence break, sending with shouts the horrible errors of childhood, storming out to play through the broken dyke. And as elephants parade, holding each elephant's tail, but if one wanders, the circus won't find the park. I call it cruel, and perhaps the root of all cruelty, to know what occurs and not to recognize the fact. And so, I appeal to a voice, to something shadowy, a remote important region in all who talk. Though we could fool each other, we should consider lest the parade of our mutual life get lost in the dark. For it is important that awake people be awake, or a breaking line could discourage them back to sleep. The signals we give, yes, or no, or maybe, should be clear, the darkness around us is deep. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any public comments? Okay, so, we will continue with the deliberations and Gabe has, where we left off is, we had asked staff to come up with a draft final order and a condition for the appeal issue number four from the opponent's appeal. So, that's what's sitting in front of us. Gabe, do you have any comments? And then I would like to give everyone, I don't know, maybe an additional five minutes to, just to look over it, make sure, especially Planning Commission, that you're, you've had a chance to thoroughly review the final order. So, Gabe, do you have any comments?
Just briefly, I would note that based on the results of the commission's votes at last Thursday, our direction was to come back with a draft final order that would've, and in essence, what this does is result in affirming the hearing's officials' approval of the proposed development of Cathedral Park and would replace Condition 5 with a revised condition. That is included on page seven of the draft, and if it's helpful, you can walk through each of these appeal issues, or I defer to the chair if you'd like a few minutes for commissioners just to read through it.
What, so, I'm just gonna open it up, I just wanna get some quick feedback from planning commissioners, would you like, Gabe, to step through them? Would you like five minutes? So, if anybody, if people can give me a show of hands if five minutes is helpful? Okay. So, would you like, Gabe, to just briefly go over it?
I think for me, it would be helpful.
Okay, so, we'll just briefly touch on the items rather than word for word, please.
Sure, and, and so, just for clarity, the first appeal issue is, is the applicant's appeal concerning the goalpost rule under statute, as to what standards would be locked in, whether or not to lock in the standards and criteria in effect in 2002 when the application was originally submitted, or whether, as a result of the hearing's official's decision that would, to decline to address that issue, whether that would remain an open question following the approval. Based on the commission's tie vote there on Thursday, that would result in affirming his decision, and in effect, what that means is that you would find that the hearing's official was correct in declining to decide the issue, and, and in effect, that also meant that the commission would not be adopting the applicant's proposed condition, which would have locked in the 2002 standards. So, that's, in essence, the first appeal issue.
Yes, Commissioner Borowski.
I guess, just for me, it would be interest, I would be interested to know how Commissioner Mills.
I'd like to hear his point by point in the memo.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's, let's hold any questions and then we'll move the meeting after he's had a chance to summarize.
I will answer your question.
And so, in effect, what we've provided is a set of findings that would, would support the commission's determination on Thursday, that he, the hearing's official was correct in declining to decide the issue. Under the remaining appeal issues, these are the opponent's appeal items. The commission's vote resulted in a conclusion that there's adequate evidence in the record to support, support his finding that public services and facilities, including wastewater service, are available as required by the approval criteria. And, and I think importantly there, we discuss in the findings that there was indeed a discrepancy with regard to the initial public works referral findings and follow-up conversations where we understand that, in fact, wastewater service is available in Willamette Street at 40th Avenue, and so, we've, we've provided those to help support, and in effect, they're supplemental findings that would be adopted by the commission to clarify that issue as it relates to the hearing's official's decision. Under the second appeal issue, the result of the commission's direction would be to find that the hearing's official was correct in establishing a condition of approval that would require the applicant to obtain a new conditional use permit for the cemetery use that would essentially shrink the footprint of the existing cemetery CUP approval and make the land available for the controlled income and rent housing. And so, the key issue there, I think, for the opponents was the timing and whether or not applicant was required to obtain that CUP approval before the CIR request was approved. His conclusion and the one that the commission supported at deliberations was that it was appropriate and legal to establish that condition and defer the new conditional use permit process to a later date. Under the third appeal issue, which challenged the sufficiency of evidence in the record regarding private stormwater and the stormwater services in the proposed private street, and that it violated one of the standards at Eugene Code 9.724 subsection 2A2, and there's a sub-issue here also regarding the street, and citing a general lack of evidence to demonstrate the function and safety of circulation, ingress and egress, in violation of a separate additional criterion. And I think an important point that came out in the discussion at commission's last deliberations meeting is that, that subsection regarding the requirement for an applicant to commit to private services and facilities is really contingent upon finding in the first instance that public services and facilities are not available. Well, so, based on the commission's resolution of that issue in favor of finding that services were, public services were available, these findings point out that the subsection concerning private commitment by the applicant to pay for private services and facilities really is not even invoked, and so, that, that addresses appeal issue three in the findings that we've provided for you today. The fourth appeal issue is a little more lengthy in terms of the findings that we've provided, because based on the commission's direction, there, there's an interest in, in actually replacing the hearing's official's condition of approval number five related to the piping of the Braeburn Creek in the southwest corner of the subject property. And so, based on that direction, we came back with a draft condition of approval, and if it helps, I'll, I'll read first the hearing's official's condition of approval number five, and then staff's proposed alternative based on your direction. So, the hearing's official's condition number five read that the applicant may capture, pipe, and pump any surface water and/or stormwater flowing on the property to a holding reservoir to be used for irrigation so long as the applicant obtains all required city, state, and/or federal permits as may be necessary. And the staff recommended condition reads as follows. The applicant shall remove from its site plan and development proposal the proposed stormwater infrastructure that includes piping of the stream corridor, Braeburn Creek, in the southwest corner of the subject property. And so, when we get to that issue in deliberations today, we'll wanna understand if the commission prefers that language or would like to modify it or otherwise revisit the conclusion on that. Under the fifth issue, the opponents challenged the vagueness of the approval, and the planning commission's conclusion at the deliberations last Thursday was that the appeal issue lacks enough specificity to act upon. So, it's a relatively brief set of findings, so we can discuss that further when we get to it.
So, right now, I wanna ask if you have any questions specific, so, Commissioner Borowski, your question, let's hold that question. Any specific questions for staff on the final draft order or the draft condition? Commissioner Jaworski.
I'm somewhat confused on number five. It was my understanding that when we were discussing number five, we were also saying, would that open up issues to look at specific things that the hearing's official had recommended, and that we didn't conclude with a vote on that, as far as I remember, but I didn't go back and review it. Am I wrong in that?
That is true, that there was interest in potentially revisiting some of the conditions of approval, and we had some discussion toward the end of the meeting last Thursday as to whether or not there was a sufficient connection between the interest in modifying those conditions and an actual appeal issue that would create the opportunity to revisit those in terms of the language in the conditions, and, and if you wanna add anything with regard to that. We can revisit those issues if commissioners have interest under appeal issue number five in discussing other alternative conditions or revisions if, if needed.
So, in that case, the reason I asked that is, I did not know, Madam Chair, if there was supposed to be a vote on the entire recommended package, or we would take each one at a, at a time.
So, it, these were, it was a straw poll, so, that's what would happen today, is that we would have, make that decision today, and we can do either, and let me finish with the, let's first go through a round of questions for the final order, and then we'll get to yours in minute, in a minute. Okay, Commissioner Mills.
Answer to.
Let's hold off on, so, just any specific questions to the final order?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
So, right now, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna answer both of your questions in a way that's gonna start the deliberations. So, what I'm gonna do is throw out a motion. I move to adopt the final order and affirm the hearing official decision approving the subject CIR, CUP application as modified in the final order. Are there any seconds?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. So, now, we'll have a discussion. So, Commissioner Mills and then Commissioner Baker.
I guess I'm gonna back away, 'cause it feels premature, but it's open for discussion, so I wanna listen to what's being said here.
Okay, Commissioner Baker.
I'll back with you, I thought we were gonna discuss each of these first.
Here's your opportunity to discuss any of your discussion points. So, there's been a motion, okay?
Till, you know, I'll let someone else speak first.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski.
Well, I would be, the way the motion is worded, I would vote against it, 'cause I would, I would like to, I would like to ask for another straw poll on appeal issue number one, to see if the commission is still in favor of, if it's still a two-two tie, basically, is what I'm wanting to find out. And if it's not a two-two tie, then I think there, that's the discussion that I would like to hear, and I don't know the procedure you would like to get to that.
I think your original question might still be relevant in this discussion. So, Commissioner Jaworski and then Commissioner Mills.
With, with regard to Commissioner Borowski's comment, I would think that if we have a discussion and then we vote on it and fails, it's fairly obvious then that that vote was changed. So, but with regard to specific issues, I did have a question. Could come from number five, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, the hearing's official on his, one of his conditions was number three, is that only CIR housing could be built on this site, and that approvals wouldn't, wouldn't hold if, if that, in fact, did not occur. And it says that there's a CIR housing definition in EC 9.015. I couldn't, I didn't find that definition, I, I tried to, to look real quickly and, and I don't know, is that the same definition that existed when he applied, if there is one in there?
If it helps, I can read the definition from the old code. It was included in the original staff report, it is a matter of record, so I'll just recite that here in a moment. Controlled income and rent housing is defined as a housing project or that portion of a larger project consisting of any dwelling type or types exclusively for low-income individuals and/or families sponsored by a public agency, a nonprofit housing sponsor, a developer, a combination of the foregoing, or other alternatives as provided for in the Oregon revised statutes or federal statutes to undertake, construct, or operate housing for households that are low-income. For the purposes of this definition, low-income means having income at or below 80% of the area median income. 80%.
Of the medium income?
Yes.
Is that the medium income that existed in 2004, or is that the medium income that existed now since the application was approved at that time?
My opinion would be that it would be now, because the facts currently apply, the law from 2002 applies, but the facts as they exist today apply, and there's case law that supports that. So, I think what you would probably be using is the, the area median income.
So, that definition is different than applicants to have housing there required, like being a section eight required housing? That's different than what this definition is?
Yeah, this is.
Broader.
I'm not sure what the section eight definition is, but this is separate, it doesn't coincide at all with section eight requirements.
I guess I'll go, I'll go back to my original comment, more or less in support of Vice Chair Borowski's comment. I, I feel it's premature, I'm, I'm a little troubled about how we're gonna have this overarching vote without the discussion intervening. So, I'm sequencing and understanding how we're gonna proceed here with that motion on the table is kinda confusing to me.
So, basically, the way we've proceeded is move the deliberations from, basically, seamlessly from the last deliberations to the current deliberations. This was the direction, the vote and the direction given to staff, so that's where we are today. So, in terms of, I think Commissioner Borowski's question is a valid one, and I think there's opportunity during this discussion period for you to discuss your input to it. Staff has the information in terms of the straw poll vote and the numbers. Do you have anything more to add?
I'm still a little confused about how we're proceeding here. You know, with that motion, it feels like, I'm not trying to make us rehash everything that was covered in my absence, I, I'm aware of everything that's been done, I have established what my positions are in each of those points, I'm happy to share those where they're, where they're needed. I'm just not quite sure how to, how to do that here or when to do it, so that's.
So, it's a, it's a motion, so, it's similar to, I think, Commissioner, yeah, exactly.
So, just to recap what the votes were Thursday, on all of the opponent's appeal issues, there were four zero or three one votes. So, to the extent that you voted against any of those, you're not gonna have any effect. So, the only thing that you would have an impact on is the goalpost rule issue.
And the other place I might have an impact is where there's language yet to be submitted.
Yes, definitely.
Got that.
So, I don't know if that helps with your discussion of narrowing it down to really what I think the only issue left is.
That does help, and it does funnel it down, so really, the only, am I hearing you correct, Counselor, that really, the question that really should be resolved is the question that Vice Chair Borowski asked about, you know, what's my position on the applicant's appeal issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, that was very helpful. Commissioner Baker and then Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, I feel uncomfortable as well, Commissioner Mills. I think because we only did straw polls on these five, I think it would be valuable to just open a discussion and have final votes on each one of these separately, and in those, and that way, we can, if we needed to modify the language more reasonably, we can discuss the language for each one and modify it if needed. So, I just don't, you know, it seems like we're trying to rush things here, and I would rather, you know, they were only straw polls, we didn't take any final polls last week, so, we haven't really had official votes on any, any of these. And there may be some issues raised where we would wanna raise, change the language slightly, you know, add some additional words to the, the hearing's official's determination, the way we've done and the one we've proposed to change, but we might add some other wording to the ones that we, you know, discussed earlier.
Commissioner Jaworski. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry about that. Can I?
No, fine.
Commissioner Borowski.
So, I, I guess for me, the, the procedural way to do this would be take a vote on it, and if this fails, then, then we start from scratch. Okay.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yes, I, I beg to differ with Commissioner Baker, I don't believe they were straw polls, no one indicated, when I looked at the record, that we're taking a straw vote on this. We took a vote, and those were official votes at that time, however, we did not take official vote on the final, which is before us here. To open further discussion, let me just say that on the goalpost rule or, or the applicant's appellant's appeal, I voted that the hearing's official did not err on that, and for the benefit of a commissioner that maybe didn't hear all of that in the, in the actual record of what moved me is, in reading the fact that the hearing official did state that this was an application for a CUP and not necessarily an application for a building permit, that's a real distinction. The second thing is, is that this city attorney's memo did indicate that in, in the city of Eugene, there's a two-step process for this, and they're different, and one does not apply to the other. And I think that those kinds of things led me to say that the hearing's official did not err in stating that the goalpost rule did not apply beyond the actual CUP application.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills, did you have your hand?
I didn't have my hand up.
Okay. Would you like to go?
I did not, but I'm happy to comment at this time. And I guess I'm gonna go to the goalpost rule, because I think that's the kind of the elephant in the room right now, what is Jeff thinking? So, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna speak carefully here and probably a little circuitous, 'cause I don't wanna confuse, but I don't wanna jump in. I'm going to the document handed out this morning that Gabe has provided, and I'm on page three, I'm in the paragraph below the appellant's appeal, and I'm in the last sentence of that paragraph beginning, "The PC also agrees with a statement made in the city attorney's letter June 29 memo, that for the most part, the applicant's CUP proposal is intentionally flexible, conceptual in nature, and does not address specific development issues. Accordingly, only a few, only a few of the 2002 development standards are locked in place." I agree with that statement. So, what I, and I wanna approach this cautiously, I believe that the goalpost rule applies to the CUP in question. I do not believe that the goalpost rule eliminates the possibility of more modern standards being applied at subsequent proceedings. I hope that's clear enough?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not quite sure which side, quite frankly, I'm not quite sure which side of the vote that puts me on, but that's, that's what I think. I think that means, I think, just based on what Chairman, excuse me, Commissioner Jaworski just said, that that means I agree with the hearing's official. Is that correct, Gabe?
That would be the.
Is that what, that's how you interpret it?
That would be the effect.
I wanna be careful how I say this, 'cause I don't wanna create confusion, but that's, you know, just moving to the fundamental, I believe that the goalpost rule requires that the rules in place in 2002 should be applied to the CUP and our review of it, but it does not preclude subsequent procedures requiring looks at subsequent regulation.
Commissioner Borowski.
Having heard that, and, and going back to my recollection of the, the way that the staff had us look at the appellant's applicant, was we were gonna look at it in two stages. We were gonna say, does it, or, this is what I thought I heard from the city attorney at that point, if you feel the C, the goalpost rule applies, we would take that vote, and then, how does it apply was gonna be the second discussion. We never got to that second part of the discussion, because the first part of the discussion was, was a two-two tie, and so, that meant that the hearing's official was affirmed, so. So is that kind of what we...
The first part of the question really was determining whether you think the hearings officer erred in not getting to the issue.
Right.
So what you just talked about was basically the substance of the goalpost rule, which is interesting to know you're, but, so the first vote that we took that there was a two-two vote on was, did the hearings officer err in not reaching the issue? And the reason he gave, he gave a pretty detailed analysis of why he didn't reach that issue.
Yeah.
So, and it's somewhat related, somewhat related to what you were saying.
Well, I'm approaching this cautiously because I'm not, you know, I've listened to the webcast, but you didn't have opportunity to get clarification that I might have needed at the time. And so I'm approaching this cautiously as I say this. I did want to make one comment about, I think Vice Chair Borowski hits a very, very key point about this whole thing, and we're talking about whether goalposts apply or not. And I think really the key word is how, how the goalpost rule applies, how and where it applies, and how we're going to interpret that. And this is a real tall order for us as laymen to do this. I'm not trying to shirk it, but I'm saying that this how is a really tough, involved question.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I'm going to switch gears and mention the issue that I wanted to address that is related to appeal issue one, and it's on page four. It would be on the one, two, third paragraph. And this relates to not necessarily disagreeing with the, you know, hearings official, but adding additional language. And that is because there's a section there that says, "Planning staff also understands from power of conversation, public work staff, that there is in fact a wastewater system that could be made available at the site, but the subject site is located out." To my knowledge, that isn't in the written record. I mean, that wasn't ever submitted in the testimony to... Anyways, if this is the case and we say nothing about that in the order, it seems, I mean, what I would suggest is we consider adding some language that, you know, agrees with the hearings official, but adds language that there is this issue that the applicant may need to deal with in the future.
Staff, can you please answer Commissioner Baker's, I guess, first question, which was embedded in his statement, is the, is this within the record?
It is not within the written record. So Commissioner Baker, could you clarify what language you would like us to add to resolve your concern?
Well, I would, I would, let's see if I find, let me find the official order here. We would just change the wording so you, PC finds there is adequate evidence in the record. However, we note that, you know, public works staff has indicated that wastewater may be available in a different basin, and this would need to be considered in future applications.
Before we move to Commissioner Jaworski, I want to make sure, do you have a comment, question?
We can make that change in the event that we get to it as a result of the votes.
Okay. Commissioner Jaworski.
My question was relative to that change. If it's not in the record, can it be included in the finding? I think it should just be totally removed.
Yeah, we will revise it so that there's not a reference to something, right? Is that how you're playing it?
So we would strike the reference to follow-up conversations, in effect, and I think based on your suggestion, we would add a finding that the PC concludes there is adequate evidence in the record to determine that wastewater service is available.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Not to bounce around, but to get back to the issue, on the goalpost rule, there was a question as to how, I think that there was some discussion on that at the, our first deliberation, because in the how, there was a concern as to how would this apply and what their restrictions would be, and there was a concern for the developer. And we specifically, at least I know I specifically mentioned, if any of the four or five things so cited could be adjusted, which it came back, there could be adjustments to those. And in addition, there was clarification that said that nothing in the permitting process could deny the application. That made me very comfortable with the fact that this was two separate proposals, and the applicant was not being hindered beyond unreasonable means.
And there is, if you know, that is noted in the final order?
Yeah, I'm just restating it for this discussion now. I mean, I read fast, so I sometimes miss things, so.
Any more discussion? Okay. I'm going to, Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I brought it up already on issue number five. Did anyone ever want to go back to some of the initial hearings officials' conditions and discuss that? Or if not, that's okay with me also, but I thought that was the opportunity to do that. Initially, there'd been some expressed concerns, but then again, they were withdrawn. I think this would be the time, if there are, to bring them up before we vote.
Well, I can put myself in the queue and answer, at least from my perspective. I was one of those commissioners. Based on our discussion at the first deliberation, I feel pretty clear that I don't have an interest in revisiting it because I think that, once again, we only can look at the criteria in front of us, and I can't necessarily draw the connection to the appeal issues. And I think how we're addressing it right now is the limit of where I think our review is allowed. While I say that, and I really, truly wish that someone had appealed some of this language, quite frankly, but as separate appeal items, but that didn't happen. So that's why I don't particularly have any, I am very comfortable with where it is. Commissioner Baker?
Again, I had concerns about conditions 14 and 15, particularly condition 15, based on several items in the record from the, Mark Snyder, who's the head of forestry, about concerns that had occurred on this site before, with inadequate tree protection, where mandated that they have tree fencing. Although it requires, in 15, it requires some level of tree protection, it doesn't specify tree fencing, or, you know, whatever was noted in the record several times by Mark Snyder. And I would have preferred to have that entered as part of the condition, given the past experiences on this site where tree removal was not done in a way that preserved trees that were not supposed to be removed.
Staff, do you have any follow-up on that? I know you followed up last time because Commissioner Baker had the same question, but for Commissioner Mills' benefit.
Sure. And just to reiterate, what we had expressed at the deliberations is that these conditions taken together will require the applicant to employ the services of a certified arborist and that will employ protection measures. It's not specifically or explicitly stated as to using tree protection fencing, but that's certainly a common and likely protection measure that would be implemented to protect trees. But I think the bigger issue or concern on the part of staff would be the lack of a connection between your concern and our ability to modify the condition with regard to any specific appeal issue. So we're not sure that it's legal to reach that condition in order to modify it, based on the scope of the appeals.
Well, I, sorry.
Commissioner Baker, yeah, that was going to be my follow-up question after Staff explained that, is that really that's the objective here? So if you can draw a connection to one of the appeal items, and then we can get Counsel's response.
I directly attached it to appeal issue four because of the removal of excess natural vegetation that we're citing there. You know, there was a appeal issue about piping Braeburg Creek and the removal of attractive natural vegetation violation. And that, to me, would be the same thing. We're trying to protect the trees in that area, and yet we're not, from my point of view, providing guaranteed protection.
And Staff did look at that following the deliberation meeting, and I think if you look closely at appeal issue four, yes, they do cite the criterion with regard to unnecessary vegetation removal, but the scope of the appeal issue is focused on the creek corridor, not the entire site, to which these conditions apply. And so the intent and the application of conditions 14 and 15 really apply to the boundary between the CIR housing proposal and the trees along the perimeter of the site in a much broader scope than is represented in appeal issue four. So we do have concerns about the ability to reach that still.
Well, again, my concern would be even if the language was changed for that area, because if you looked at the other language, one of the other conditions from the hearings official was, "The entire development impact area may be graded and cleared of vegetation." So the only areas that we're really concerned about that aren't, don't have official approval to clear the vegetation is the stream corridor and a few small buffers on one side of the property. So my concern is that stream corridor is the major area where there would be vegetation I mean, again, if it weren't for, you know, number 14, you know, you might say that it's, you know, there's really, really very little except for that stream corridor area and...
And if it helps for purposes of the discussion, and depending on the vote, on the initial motion that's on the table at this point, if we reach the appeal issue number four and Staff's proposed condition with regard to the elimination or removal of the piping of the stream segment, that would be, I think, an appropriate place to discuss the detail. In effect, I think the removal of that proposed piping from the application, it could also be clarified that they removed the proposed development impact areas depicted on the site plans. That was the intent of the draft condition. So we can discuss that depending on the initial vote.
Well, I would feel better about that, again, you can understand.
So if I can make a suggestion, I mean, I made the motion, I'm actually still depending because I'm not yet an expert on Roberts' Rules of Orders, my vice chair here, but suggest a friendly amendment, because right now the motion is I move to adopt the final order and affirm the hearing official decision of leaving the subject CR CUP application as modified in the final order. A friendly amendment might be that we work on condition number five, the replace condition five.
Right, I could make a friendly amendment.
Okay. But then if you want to amend the actual language, or I don't know if you want to suggest it and Staff come back, or you can say, anyways, you go.
Yeah, and I don't, actually, I defer to our experts here, Gabe and others, if it would be better to put that in, when we make the change here to number five, do we make a corresponding change to number 14, or do we just make the change in five and note that, you know, the piping, the stream corridor be removed from the, where would we best put, that we remove the stream corridor from the, from the, the development impact area in our findings?
We can work on some wording at today's meeting, I think, depending on the outcome of the vote and get the full commission's discussion in preference with regard to that when we get to it.
Okay.
So can I ask Counsel, just because of the motion on the table, how do you, how do we effectively do a friendly amendment to look at?
Do a friendly amendment, or you could just take a straw poll and see if there's anyone else who agrees with that before we...
Okay.
I don't know if, I haven't heard from anyone else on that issue, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Jaworski?
No, I didn't, I had my hand up just to say if there was a friendly amendment proposed, you and I would have to agree to that as your original motion.
Yeah, so do you want a friendly amendment? Are you actually moving forward with one? Because I guess I don't want to cut you off.
I'm fine if you want to have a straw poll and that decides that it's not an issue, then we won't.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is you're going to, right now, set aside the friendly amendment because I'm going to give Commissioner Mills a chance to talk, and then we can do a straw poll.
I'm going to use the word premature again. I'm still not clear that everybody agrees we had straw poll or vote. My impression in viewing the webcast is that there were votes, but people have used the term straw poll. If those were straw polls, then...
So this is the issue that came up, and I did check with Glenn on how he generally advises the city council on when stuff like this comes up. It may have been not completely appropriate or necessary to do formal motions and votes, although, yeah, we weren't calling them straw polls, but because we haven't ruled on the appeals themselves, they can be revisited. So when a new commissioner comes in, those votes can be revisited because we haven't taken the final action on the quasi-judicial appeal. So with that said, you can...
The final action, as suggested in this...
Yeah, that was, the motion was that final.
Then I'd be against the motion at this time. I just feel like there's more to talk about first.
Okay. So can I, for the sake of continuing with what's on the table now, let's get a, per Commissioner Baker's suggestion and Staff, just a straw poll on if this item of addressing condition number five and following up with Staff to look at the protection measures around the area where the pipe was. So all those that would support the friendly amendment, all those in favor, remember this is straw poll, please raise your hand.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Because I thought I was really talking to appeal issue four, not five.
Yeah.
I wasn't really talking.
That's what I, yeah.
So then maybe I misunderstood Staff's recommendation?
Appeal issue four conditioning.
Oh, sorry, it is, sorry, I confused it. Sorry, appeal issue four, condition, approval, condition number five. Sorry, could have been my language. Thank you for clarifying that. So all the, do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah, would you please?
Yes.
Sorry, I just...
Yeah. So actually, I could have Steve repeat it, or excuse me, Commissioner Baker. My understanding, we're going to take a straw poll, vote if commissioners are open to the friendly amendment amending appeal, item number four, condition five, looking at that language and adding some language that addresses the vegetation protection within that area. Is that clear, Bobby? Is that what you wanted, Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I think Gabe said it almost better.
Oh, of course.
Remove it from the development impact area.
Okay. So it's just, it's basically really, we're not talking about wordsmithing the condition. Staff's going to come back with that. So that's generally, so all...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
That's kind of what you had planned on doing anyways, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. We're just getting a straw poll vote to see if friendly amendment is something we want to move forward with. All those that would be in favor of that?
Of the friendly amendment.
Of the friendly amendment? All those opposed? So friendly amendment, we're open to that, so any more discussion on the motion that's on the table with this friendly amendment? Commissioner Mills?
Yes, just a comment or confirmation, that is, currently, the stream in question is piped on both sides of the property, as I recall reading that. Is that correct?
My understanding is that it is culvered. My understanding is that it is culverted under the public streets on either side, but there are open portions adjacent to the subject property, one of which is owned by the Edgewood Town Home Association downstream. It's an open channel.
Thank you, Gabe.
Any more discussion before I call the question? Okay, I'll call the question, the motion on the table. All those in favor? Do you want me to repeat it?
Please.
Okay. I move to adopt the final order and affirm the hearing official decision approving the subject CIR CUP application as modified in the final order with a friendly amendment for staff to look at the wording under appeal four, the revised planning commission suggestion, or condition, approved condition number five. You'll get back to us either today, within today's meeting? Yeah.
I'm changing the language here. I'm changing this language, right?
And the other change?
Yes, and we'd also make an additional change with regard to the Public Works referral and the issue wastewater service, just one other tweak.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Baker?
And I just wanted to leave it open to staff to decide whether that would, that would affect the language in 14 as well as five. I mean, right now, we're making a change to five, but it's up to you where you put this language and whether it would be better fitted, five or 14, right?
Well, again, I don't, I don't believe that the scope of the appeal issue allows us to reach conditions 14 and 15 with regard to adding more specific language about tree protection. Our intent would be to discuss and modify the language in condition number five.
Okay, that's fine.
Specific to removing the development impact areas as depicted on the plans for the piping of the stream.
Right, that's the main concern.
Okay, so, I'm going to repeat it again, and I'm going to stay on this. I move to adopt, this is the motion, I move to adopt the final order and affirm the hearing official decision approving the subject CIR CUP application as modified in the final order. There's a friendly amendment that staff has been directed to look at, the approved condition number five, it's being revised, under appeal, item number four, as well as address the language and to remove any reference to follow-up conversations with Public Works on page four, under the opponent's appeal, issue number one. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the vote is four in favor, one opposed. So, it sounds like, I know there's a time constraint issue, so, do you want to have everybody take a break and you look at some language? I'm going to look at, defer to you, how do you want to address this?
I can propose a suggested amendment to condition number five now, if you'd like.
Should we, we have time, so, should we give staff enough time to make sure they're comfortable with that? And how much time, what would you like us to do? We can eat our chocolate hearts and you guys can take some time.
I've already eaten.
I'm ready to propose.
Oh, you're ready to propose?
You need to change, sorry.
Okay, great, you're, you are a savant, okay, great.
I don't know about that, but the recommended amendment, it would keep the language, and I'll just read the whole thing with my proposed addition. So, as revised, it.
Where are we at?
We are on page seven of the draft final order. This would be the planning commission's alternative to the hearings official's condition of approval number five.
Okay.
And it would read that the applicant shall remove from its site plan and development proposal the proposed stormwater infrastructure that includes piping of the stream corridor, Brabird Creek, in the southwest corner of the subject property. Specifically, the applicant shall remove the development impact area as depicted on the applicant's site plans, sheet CU-1A, for purposes of piping Brabird Creek. So, in effect, just to explain a little bit further, we have the most recent set of the applicant's plans, which, in the whited out area depicts what is labeled as the, quote, "development impact area." And specifically, what this revision would do is require the elimination of the development impact area where it overlaps Brabird Creek for purposes of piping the stream corridor. Now, the proposed language here is not explicit about the applicant's need and ability to reach the sanitary sewer, and in effect, that's intentional on the part of staff to enable their connection of wastewater service to a manhole on the other side of the creek. It would take more time to, I think, refine and add findings that really hone in on that issue, but in effect, this would, and I think it should be made a matter of record through this discussion, I think is sufficient, but that they would have the ability, not only based on the fact that there's a public utility easement over the existing sanitary line on the other side of the creek, but that, you know, the intent here is not to preclude their ability to connect sanitary sewer, and that they would need to cross the creek in order to do that. What this has to do is with is the development impact that is linear along the creek for purposes of piping the stream. Does that help?
Yes.
It does, and I was going to say, I'll, and then you next, I was going to say, that would be, sorry, I'm inserting myself in the queue, is, that would be my only concern, is we make sure, and based on what you said, but I'm not sure the language exactly gets at that, maybe we want to have clear language to make sure that there is that ability to connect with the sanitary sewer line. I don't want to preclude that and have a condition that.
Yeah, and I'm working on some language right now to actually explicitly call that out as part of the condition.
Thirty seconds. Commissioner Jaworski.
And that's what I was going to say, I mean, it seemed to me that in reading the applicant's arguments for the piping, he did say that some piping would be required to put the sewer line underneath it, and so, to preclude all of the piping might jeopardize the impact.
Well, it actually, in some ways makes, we've just rendered their ability to connect to services, yeah, which we don't want to do.
Maybe we say, limit the piping to as, you know.
And maybe I.
Nancy Smithing.
So, sorry, are there any other comments?
The only other comment would be, I think if you could read the section that we're going to be taking out about the, about the Public Works, I think, just so that we all are clear as to what we are approving.
So, I realize I said something fairly quickly, and I also, so I want to clarify, when I said it's something we don't want to do, it's based on the criteria. We have a very, very succinct set of criteria that we need to be complying with, so, that's what I mean by, we can't, I don't want to pass something that precludes the ability to connect with the services that's around the site.
So, as a third sentence, and in addition to what I read previously, we could add the following, "This does not preclude the ability for the applicant to connect wastewater service as proposed and would require a crossing of the creek in order to reach the public
The only thing that I would say is that may, to cross the creek to reach the wastewater, which may include a small portion of piping, because what we're saying is take the piping out.
It was the piping of the creek for stormwater purposes? This is a pipe that would actually go under the creek.
But sometimes, I thought I read in his thing, that, in the applicant's thing, that it would need to be piped over the underneath piping. And this has to do with removal of vegetation is the, is the criteria that it got to, so, I mean.
It also will depend upon the design of the sewer system in that area. You're going to have to match, through technical, you're going to have to match inverts to make sure that everything flows correctly, otherwise, you're going under, you know, you're going to have to allow them some flexibility in order to make sure that the channel flow works, and so, that might get back to.
I just would hate to put something in the order that would.
I think we're not going in order anymore. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Baker, thank you.
Yeah, I think there's two things. One, the primary reason that they cited for, for piping the stream had nothing to do with wastewater. It was, it was to guarantee that no additional stormwater went into the creek, and so, by tunneling it from one end to the other, you know, you wouldn't change it. And the other thing about the wastewater is they're going to have to pump anyways, as I understand it, so, it's a pumped system, so, you know, we really shouldn't speculate. I mean, I think Gabe's language is fine in terms of, it says that they have to make a connection, and later on, when they apply for a permit, it doesn't, it doesn't preclude them tunneling underneath the creek or, you know, whatever they need to do to get that pipe there, so, I'm fine with the language. And again, like I say, it's got to be a pumped wastewater system, so, you know, it's not gravity.
I'm going to just insert myself in the queue quickly, is that I agree with Commissioner Jaworski. I think there's some strong language that specifically says includes piping of the stream corridor, and I, I'm not sure I agree with Commissioner Baker. At this point, we don't have their design. There isn't, so, I, based on the information we have and the approval criteria, my only concern is that I think it's important that we provide a level of flexibility to access that sanitary sewer, the public sanitary sewer line. And I don't know what the design's going to be. Maybe it would, depending on all the conditions, require a very small segment of stormwater to be piped. I don't, yeah, and I'm not sure I could be wrong, but, and I'd love staff, legal counsel's opinion, because if you don't have a concern, then I don't have a concern. Commissioner Jaworski, and then Commissioner Baker.
Do you want a response from legal first?
Sure, you can say it too.
Yeah, I'm relying on Gabe for that. I mean, there's, it's mostly the condition that he's going to draft to make sure that, it's more practical concerns than it is a legal concern. You want to make sure that they can do it.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Jaworski, and then Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I don't have a concern, because I feel the way that it was so stated by staff, that when you go through the permitting phase, the engineers reviewing that, since it says he can connect, will determine what is the best way for that to occur, so I don't really have a concern with it.
Yeah, makes sense. Commissioner Baker?
And I concur, I feel it's a two-step process, so, you know, we've, mainly what we've told them is they can't, you know, as a condition of the application, they don't, they aren't required to pipe the entire stream, because that was right now, is the condition of the application, is they must, you know, they may, or whatever, you know, pipe the entire stream. So, we've removed that condition and put in a condition that still allows them to make the connection, but doesn't mandate piping the stream and the affected, effect on vegetation.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we'll just wait for Gabe, he's rapidly writing.
Okay, well, I'll give it a shot.
Let's let Commissioner Jaworski, do you want to go first?
No, I didn't know how long it was taking, I was just going to ask if someone could have read what Commissioner Jaworski asked for, which was that, what they're extracting from one of those conditions, so we know the final wording. I'm sorry if he's ready yet.
Perfect.
So, the suggested addition would be something like this, that the applicant may pipe a portion of the stream corridor if the applicant can demonstrate the necessity of piping that portion of the stream to cross the creek with a licensed engineering analysis as the only feasible alternative to connect to the public wastewater system. We can tinker with that, but the intent would be that they need to provide an engineering analysis that shows they have to pipe the creek in order to get underneath it with the wastewater service, or to cross the creek to get to the manhole.
And is the first portion still there?
Yes.
Perfect.
It's a wordy condition, but I can read the whole thing together, if you need it.
Well, that would be good, just so clarified for everyone.
All right, I'll give it a shot. Okay, "The applicant shall remove from its site plan and development proposal the proposed stormwater infrastructure that includes piping of the stream corridor, Brabird Creek, in the southwest corner of the subject property. Specifically, the applicant shall remove the development impact area as depicted on the site plans, sheet CU-1A, for purposes of piping Brabird Creek. This does not preclude the ability for the applicant to connect wastewater service as proposed and would require a crossing of the creek to reach the public wastewater system. The applicant may pipe a portion of the stream if the applicant can demonstrate the necessity of piping the portion of the stream to cross the creek with a licensed engineering analysis that shows it is the only feasible alternative to connect to the system."
And then the section that we're taking out of the sentence that you're going to, where it says, "Planning staff also understands," is that what we're going to?
So, back on page four of the final order, we would strike the first part of that sentence with reference to follow-up conversations. That sentence would read that, "The PC finds there is adequate evidence in the record to conclude that there is in fact a wastewater system that could be made available to the site at Fortieth and Willamette." Dot, dot, dot.
Dot, 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 meaning the other one.
Just continue.
It continues on.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I'm confused. I thought we were talking about the third paragraph where it states all the things concerning with what the subsequent discussions with Public Works has stated. I thought the rest was staying as is, and we were just eliminating that, you know, one, two, three, four, five lines, four lines. That's, that's how I understood it, maybe I understood it incorrectly.
An alternative to the suggested language could be that we simply strike the first part of the sentence and start the sentence, that there is in fact a wastewater system that could be made available to the site at Fortieth and Willamette, so, we don't need the preface of the PC's conclusion and evidence and such. Probably other ways to word it as well.
Commissioner Jaworski.
No, I'm just, I'm just falling back to Commissioner Jaworski, because he had the question on the issue, if he's comfortable with that.
Okay, so, I think what I'd like to do right now, we have a motion, we gave staff direction, do we go through, and should we do another motion for this, or we already have the motion, just do straw, is everybody, I want to make sure everybody's okay with this, so, straw poll?
For, what are you doing?
Just the language, yeah.
I mean, you can, it seems like.
Yeah, so, just if every, yes, Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I would move that we accept the recommended language as proposed concerning to the two conditions, one was the removal of certain wording, and the other was the rewording for condition five as proposed by staff.
Great. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Okay, it was unanimous? That was smooth, thank you. Commissioner Jaworski? Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I would just like to make a statement. I know that this was a very complicated issue that we dealt with here, and I appreciate all the members of the commission doing their diligence on this, and I am a little bit sad, because I've got a feeling that, that the decision we made here today is going to preclude CIR housing from being built on this spot, and that, that gives me pause. We may have gone through and done things as we felt was correct, but I believe that in the, in the long run, we're going to lose 178 units of low-income housing, and that, that makes me feel sad.
So, I just will follow up with one item, and then.
Can I see your grant?
And then, through the. So I just will follow up with one item, and then, can I see, through the last agenda items on our meeting, is, I did want to reiterate for the public, is that the Planning Commission, we are, and it was in the original introduction that I gave, that was quite lengthy, that we really are bound, I wish I could... So the Planning Commission's role, while, you know, I also have some misgivings, like for instance, the language of some of the conditions, I think, could have been a little better written, is that the Planning Commission, what we're here to do is, we have to look at relevant testimony on the appeal before us, and just to remind everyone, the testimony must be directed to the appeal issues and the approval criteria, and what's in the record. So we have a very, it's a very constrained set of items that we can look at. So I just wanted to remind the public that. So Commissioner Jaworski, did you have something? No.
Well, okay, I didn't know you were finished, I'm sorry.
No, go, go.
Oh, I just had a question, not that we're voting on anything, but in one of the conditions, the hearing official indicated a timeframe for when the final cup is approved till a permit is applied for. My question is, is that something that in the future is set by the hearing official, or is there state law or something from Luba indicating what that timeframe is? He stated seven years, and I...
Well, I think I clarified this as part of the hearing process, but in effect, the old code provisions, there is a code section that enables the hearings official to decide if a phasing schedule or timeline is appropriate beyond the normal conditional use permit expiration period of one year.
One year, okay.
And so he did invoke and use that authority in favor of the applicant's request for the seven-year timeframe for each phase. He established a condition of approval that will enable and clarify that for the life of the project. So I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so we won't see this again, because we have no outstanding older ones that would come in under the same sort of thing prior to the one-year establishment.
It's situational. I think this is, you know, it's a unique case dating back to 2002. I don't foresee the likelihood of any other applications coming forward. I'm not aware of any other applications that would have the same sort of standing in their ability to rely on the 2002 provisions. That said, depending on the land use application type under current code, similar authority is granted to the hearings official. It's not uncommon to have a timeframe beyond the expiration periods established, the basic expiration periods, when an applicant has justification for, say, a master plan or a much longer term, and particularly for large projects with multiple phases, it just makes sense to allow them more than the 18 months or 36 months under current code.
Okay, but that is something that, looking into the future, that if something like that did come up, the commission could look at that and address it for its validity.
Well, it would depend on the scope of the appeal issues, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Baker, and then Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, I was just going to note that a lot of, depending on the type of land use application, they have a three-month period, and it can be...
A year?
Three-year period, sorry, three-year period. And it can be renewed, so it's not, it's not a hard deadline, and you can renew it for another three-year period, you know, so there are other, there could have been other ways of treating it too, you know, similar to other, but by Gabe's comments, the hearings official could, you know, adjust that. I mean, that was, it's within their realm to adjust that time. But a normal application, there's a fixed period, but it can be renewed, and you can have multiple renewals, so that's another way it could have been handled.
So I just want to interject. Staff, can you please clarify that, just because we are on public record? Timeline extension, one timeline extension, can you actually, I just want to clarify and make sure that that's accurate, what Commissioner Baker's saying?
It will depend on the application type. In certain cases, I do think that there are limitations on the amount of additional timeline requests. I think in the case of conditional use permits, it may be limited. In others, it's not. I don't have the current code in front of me, I don't know that it's really necessary to walk through each one, but some applications are quite generous in terms, for example, a PUD, they're, in terms of the applicant's ability to submit a modification, so there's public process and appeal rights associated with their request to extend time.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, this is just a procedural question as far as the order that we're sending off and the appeal process of it. So if one of the applicants decided that they didn't feel that we read it the right way, what is the appeal process? And if it goes up to Luba, and Luba finds on their, in their favor, does it come back to us, does it come back to the city?
So there will be a written decision, notice will go out, 21 days to go to Luba, and if we walk through, depending on what the appeal issues are, it will come back to the city, and in general, it would come back to you, although there are situations where it might make sense to send it to the hearings officer. Again, that remand process is pretty up in the air, so we can't really determine exactly what would happen. I mean, there are situations where you don't even have to have an appeal, another hearing, where we would just adopt findings. If the hearings, if the, if Luba, for instance, made a decision in a case and said, oh, well, there aren't enough findings on this, if you don't need to put anything new in the record, you could just adopt supplemental findings without having a hearing. So the remand, the remand is kind of up in the air. If Luba, since we said the hearings officer can't address, if you're talking about the goalpost.
Yeah.
So if the hearings officer can't address this, and someone disagreed with that, say the applicant said, yeah, he could have and he should have, they'd appeal this, and they would say to Luba, the Planning Commission was wrong, because the hearings officer could have and should have addressed that, and if Luba agreed with that, they would send it back to the city. I doubt that they would determine who to send it back to.
Okay.
So then be up to us to decide whether that goes first to the hearings officer, and then up to you, or whether it comes to...
Or could you just make a decision and say, we're going to implement these findings, or we're going to go to a different body?
There would have to be, it would have to go back to somebody.
Okay.
If the Luba determines that the hearings official did not err because there's a building permit, can you please explain what are the options for the applicant? And you don't have to get into specificity, but just so the public knows.
Yeah, so there is a possibility, I mean, I know that because this site plan and proposal was very tentative, there is concern by the neighbors, understandably, that they're not going to have a say at the building permit stage. Very likely, because this plan was so conceptual, the building permit issuance will trigger some type of public process. I'm not going to say that for sure, but it's very likely that that will occur. And so at that point, there would be the opportunity for public to weigh in on what standards apply, how they apply in the issuance of the building permit process, which would kind of be converted into a land use decision. And then that would be, if it truly were a land use decision, that itself would be appealable to Luba. So that's, you know, the concern for the opponents, where we need to have a say. The concern for the applicants are, we have to do this all over again. We thought we were just going to be able to get a building permit that was, you know, over the counter. They don't want to have to go through another land use process.
Commissioner Baker.
And again, I make, want to point out that none of this can go forward until you get, deal with the other CUP, so...
No, this decision will go forward.
I know, but none of the...
Development.
Development can't go forward until you have a determination on the other CUP, and it, you know, if there is some complication of that process, that could also, you know, have an impact. In other words, that's not a given, that it automatically will, you know, happen.
Yeah.
It's an application process, and, you know, you've got to, you know. Thank you.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, not to muddy the waters, but when the hearings official said that the seven years will begin on the final CUP being effective, is that the CUP that we're talking about, or is that the 1995 CUP?
It's the request for CIR housing that has to comply with the condition, not the cemetery CUP. That's independent.
So I know that this isn't a normal meeting, general meeting, so I just want to make sure that, are there any final questions relevant to the quasi-judicial process, or if staff has any final comments? Commissioner Baker.
I just asked this of staff, just so we know in advance. Obviously, this was a weird case where something was pending, and are there any other applications that you're aware of that were appended that are in this limbo period? Just so we know, you know, that we might get another one of these.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, that's, all I wanted to be is reassured, so to speak.
It's, well, I did hear some mumbling that there might be one or two cases out there that were remanded more than a couple of years ago, that it wouldn't be a case like this, but subsequent to the legislation that triggered this case, there may, actually, they'd be dead by now.
Yeah, actually, thank you for that, refreshing my memory back to the late 90s. There was an application known as Alpine Condominiums, up off of South Willamette, near the ridgeline. I'm not recalling the specific outcome of the city's decision. I think it was an approval, was challenged at Luba and remanded. The applicant, to my knowledge, never acted on it, and actually has passed away since then. I don't know what the ownership of the property is at this point, but I believe that based on the language in the new statute for limitations around processing remands, that would effectively preclude their ability to bring it back up. It's the one I can remember.
Any other comments from staff before we close the meeting?
Only just to clarify that I'll be making some edits based on your vote here, and Commissioner, Chair Taylor, if you'd like to wait for a few minutes following the meeting, we can have you sign the final order today.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. I'm going to be moderate.